Three P M. According with the. Sorry, let me get that recording. Okay. Uh, in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC one thirty-one, section forty in the Boston Wetlands ordinance. Boston City Code ordinances, chapter seven dash one point four, the Boston Conservation Commission will hold a virtual public hearing. On November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three to to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any. The commission will impose in order to protect the interests of the public and private water supply. Groundwater prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage. Protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish and protection of wildlife habitat. Uh, this evening's uh, hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with chapter one oh seven of the Acts of twenty twenty-two, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the. Uh, platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at C C at Boston dot gov. Or via X formerly known as Twitter by tagging the. X slash Twitter handle at Boston Enviro and using the hashtag con con hearing. Uh, for the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Uh, could staff present, please identify themselves?
Didi Hernandez with the Environment Department.
And I think Christopher is um. Muted, so I'll call the role of the commissioners. Commissioner Sullivan?
I'm Sullivan.
Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Wilson?
Mike Wilson.
Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
And Commissioner Herbst?
And Herbst.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, first order of business tonight is um. Uh, to take a vote to appoint uh, Didi Hernandez, the acting um. Agent for the Conservation Commission. Um, do we have any discussion on that? Okay, uh, would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second, we have a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Hi.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six nothing. Congratulations, DeeDee. Um. First item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one nine seven three and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero six three from Four Point Associates on behalf of. The Esplanade Association for the proposed construction of a new welcoming destination located at two eighty Charles Street. The West End, Boston, Mass. Resource areas are twenty-five foot waterfront. Um. What? Yeah, riverfront uh waterfront area. And one hundred foot buffered a bank. This continued from the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three hearing. The applicant has requested a continuance. Um, so with that, I would um. Assuming there's no discussion, entertain a motion to continue. So the hearing, so thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries six to nothing. Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six. One nine six nine and Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine from A E COM on behalf. Of the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation for the proposed implementation of a system-wide maintenance. A repair program for the outfalls that discharged directly um to the muddy river um. Located at Riverway Street and Park Drive, Fenway and Mission Hill. Uh, resource areas are inland bank, one hundred foot buffered a bank. Uh, bordering land subject to flooding, land underwater. Bodies, riverfront area and waterfront area. Who's here on behalf of the proponent?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Tom Keel. I'm a wetland scientist for A E COM. I'm here tonight on behalf of D C R, and I'm also joined by Tom Walton of D C R.
Great, thank you. Floor is yours.
Thank you. So, as I stated, I'm here tonight on behalf of D C R as they're submitting this um. Stormwater outfall repair project um. For limited or selected outfalls that discharge into the muddy river from uh, D C R owned roadways. Um. These outfalls are at a state of disrepair. Not sure if the commissioners have had a chance to look at the photo log yet. Um, but in some cases, the the outfalls can't really be found. Or there's just severe erosion along the bank of the muddy river because of the state of the disrepair. Um, of the outfalls. So the purpose of the project is to repair those outfalls and improve the water quality within the muddy river and its watershed. And prevent the erosion that's currently um occurring. Um, if. We could go to the next slide, please, DeeDee, I think. So here we are, this is the reach um. Of the muddy river where the activity will take place. And on the next slide, it should be an air photo. Depicting a little hard to read, but this figure is also in the. Um, I believe appendix A of the notice of intent. Uh, to get a better look at all of the outfall numbers there. Um. To have an idea of what is going on there. So what we're placing. Underground pipes. Uh, new manhole coming out of manholes and in one instance installing a new manhole for these outfalls. Um, and then removing the existing structure if it can be found. At the end and replacing it with a uh, a new flared end. Um, and the commission member, the easiest way, I think, to get a grasp on what we're we're talking about. Is table two. Within the N O I, uh, section three of the N O I. So. It's tough, we're gonna be uh. That table there contains a brief description of the outfall ID. The repair activity and the um, resource area impacts. Will be impacting approximately six feet. Of uh, bank, linear feet of bank at each location. As we install the new flared end and uh, the riprap. Uh, there will be no permanent disturbance to um, the riverfront area. The waterfront area or the buffer zone. Um, all of it will be uh, loaned and seeded. Once the pipes have been installed, there'll be no changes of elevation. Within uh, bordering lands subject to flooding. Um, as this property is not owned by D C R, it's owned by Boston Parks. Um. Tom Walton has had numerous discussion with Boston Parks about uh, restoring it. Um, Boston Parks has reviewed and signed off on the N O I and the plans as well. Um.
I'm sorry, Tom, I'm I'm sorry about that. I was fixated with table two here. What did you say about the um, ownership? Of the parks, how's Boston Parks involved?
Uh, Boston Parks actually owns this property, Mr. Chairman. The. The uh, stormwater flows from the adjacent D C R roadways.
Got it.
To the park uh, through easements and agreements. Um, but D C R does not own the park. At that point. And so there'll be um. I do have the the next slide. Given it'll be a little tough to. Bounce back and forth. I don't know if the commissioners have a separate screen at home. It may be a little easier to, you know. Perhaps look at table two. And look at um. These slides here to get an idea of what's going on, but we could start like um. Outfall number one, it's outfall one eight nine three three. And we look at, we're gonna abandon the current outfall location in place. Install approximately ninety-five feet of a twelve inch PVC pipe. And a twelve inch reinforced uh, reinforced concrete flared end. At this location. Um. Outfall number two. Uh, very similar, ninety feet of twelve inch PVC pipe and another flared end occurring here. Um. And the bottom one, outfall number three. That one's going to be um, we're gonna install a drainage manhole. And then approximately a hundred five feet of twelve inch PVC pipe and a flared end. Um, and that. As we scroll through all of these, um, it's really the same description for each one. Installing a new PVC pipe. And a flared end from an existing manhole, uh, maintaining elevations. We've altered. The root of some of these uh, the discharge lines to avoid any tree removal while we're on site. Uh, there's a couple of them where trees have overgrown. Where we believe the existing outfall would uh. Is located, as I said earlier, some of them are hard to find. Uh, so the new outfalls will be moved, uh, you know, left or right. Of any trees that are out there to uh, eliminate vegetation removal. Um. In the same, and I, if the commissioners aren't looking at table two, I could recite what's happening here. But I think table two does an adequate job. Of describing everything that's going on at these uh. Individual outfalls. Um, and I realize you have this, at least here on the screen, it's probably hard to read all of the details. And I'd be happy to answer any uh, direct questions that the commission may have.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, uh, just a couple of quick ones uh, before I go to the rest of the commissioners. Um, can you talk about how the um. Water quality will be improved? I know that you um, said that there'll be a reduction in T S S. Um, but how is that going to be accomplished?
Um, well, as now as you can see, there's one. Great example in the photo log. We just have a uh. I believe it looks like an eight inch pipe. That. Is discharging right onto the bank with no method of energy dissipation. Um, and that holds true in a couple of locations. I'm looking through the photo log now to get the commissioners the. New one. Okay, so we photo number eight. Outfall one four two zero zero. Um, that's a prime example right there. So water is just discharging. Scouring away um, the bank surface and the land surface there. And transporting silt and sediment into the waterway. So that would have a flared end for energy dissipation. Um, in a little riprap to prevent that.
Okay, so it's a natural system. The um, reduction of the T S S is occurring because the um. You're stopping the velocity and it's just making its way naturally to the um, muddy river.
Yes, yeah, it's more of the reduction of the velocity and um, prevention of erosion along the back. That would result in the T S S reduction.
Okay, okay, um, that's all I had. DeeDee, did you have anything?
Yep, uh, I just wanted to note that the special order of conditions have not been finalized just yet. Uh, there has been some back and forth uh, between us and D C R. And um, in general, we staff are also interested in hearing a more um. More details on the construction means and methods for this project. Um, and uh, staff would like to defer to the commission.
Great, thank you. Okay, Tom, um, do you like to talk about the means and methods?
Sure, uh, means and methods for projects such as this are relatively simple. The first step, uh, as with all excavation projects, is the establishment of proper erosion controls and sediment barriers. Um, within our. Within our plan set, we have uh, I believe it's four pages. That explain the establishment of erosion controls. Um, one of our last slides here will de- de-. Or excuse me, uh, depicts a floating silt boom. That will be installed just at the end of the outlet. Um, as we go in to remove some of the. Existing infrastructure that's no longer functioning. Um, it may require a little work within the water, so we will have the floating silk boom to prevent silk from leaving the area there. Um, a lot of the. The pipe that's occurring within the upland areas will be just abandoned in place. We're not gonna have. An excessive amount of excavation. Um. In order to go hunting to find that stuff. Uh, the, as you can see here, I'll just use these outfalls as the example. Um, the trench will be approximately the width of the darkened area um. That you could see around the pipe. It's a twelve inch PVC pipe. We're only gonna have to excavate a couple feet either side of that. Um, and. The excavations will not be very deep, so we're not gonna need trench boxes and things like that, or you know, a crane to come in. So everything will be done with a uh, a backhoe and a small excavator. Um, materials will just be trucked in, dumped. Spread into the hole, you know, a little sand at the bottom of it to help you get your pitch and your grades. Uh, the vehicles will exit the site. Um. Material we're anticipating will be live loaded rather than stockpiled. Um, on the site because it is a public park. Um, you know, we 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 do not want to have just large piles of excavated material uh, within the park itself. So we're looking at live loading material. Putting the pipe in, backfilling, and then loaming seating on the areas. Um. And then coming in in any area that happens to come under the paved roadway. That area will be saw cut, pavement will be removed, and then we will repave um, to the exact dimensions and elevations uh, that we've removed.
Great. DeeDee, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that uh, reminded me of another issue, Tom. Uh, the N O I says that there'll be some de-limming. Um, and, excuse me. Um, I know how these projects can uh, change a little bit once you get into the field. So um, I'd like to put in the uh, order conditions, a special condition that if um. Anything other than minor de-limming activities occur, for instance, taking down a tree. Uh, that uh, commission staff will be notified uh, beforehand.
Uh, of course, that that's acceptable, yes.
Good. Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Yeah, why wasn't this caught when they were dredging the muddy river? I mean, if these things are missing. And yet they were on the plans of the muddy river excavation, and when the contractor was there dredging in front of them. Do you just discover this now?
Tom, let me answer that for Mr. Commissioner Sullivan. Commissioner Sullivan, this is Tom Walton. How you doing?
I'm doing fine.
So uh, a- as you are well aware, you know. The left hand usually doesn't know what the right hand's doing, and uh, the muddy river project was really, really, you know. Spread out over many years, so when when uh, design was going on with uh, this is, I believe, this section is phase two of uh, the muddy river project. Um. That's exactly what happened. They, you know. The muddy river uh, consultant team and 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 you know, and and that that whole group didn't. Really have adequate historical plans on the uh, on the outfalls for uh, the riverway and and the park drive and and such. So they were, they were, they were overlooked, and um, it wasn't until. You know, the project started getting going that uh, that these things were brought to light. And I worked with them a little bit to try to get their order conditions um. Amended to try to get them to do this work for us, and and they they didn't really want to do that. Um, so here we are, we ended up uh. Putting together our own N O I to what to get this work in, kind of like behind them.
Right, some, yeah, how deep? Well, I I heard there was gonna be too deep on these, and I saw some of the profiles. What cover do you have on top of this PVC pipe? How many feet of cover?
Uh, no uh, no less than two, probably anywhere between two and three and a half feet.
Okay, cuz I noticed one place you used SCP. Given that there is a trail here and that, you know, you don't know what the Boston Parks will want to do later for bringing heavy equipment. Uh, across, you know, just so that they can do their work in the future. Uh, you gotta make sure, and I I didn't look at each one directly, but you gotta make sure you got plenty of cover on that PVC. Cuz you can crush that pretty good.
Absolutely, absolutely. We've, we've, we've looked at that and talked with Boston Parks about those types of issues and uh. They uh.
If Fox says they like, they don't mind it, I've.
Yeah, Tom uh, Tom Timmons and in uh, their group, I, we've been working closely with them with this design.
The, the issue of reducing T S S, um. You know, the the T S S that I'm worried about is the T S S for the roadway. And so I'm assuming that all your basins that are tributary to these outfalls. Um, are deep stump catch basins that capture the the proper amount of. You know, road debris. And that they, it won't come in here. I realize, you know, the bank erosion and that, I got that, but that's like committing a crime and saying, okay, I won't do that anymore. Um, that, that don't count. We, we're looking to improve the water quality of the muddy river. We're looking to avoid having. Additional T S S from roadway deposits over the next twenty years. Um, so.
The, the answer to your question is yes, they all are deep some cut catch basins up.
And what do you guys consider deep?
Four feet.
Oh, you do a four foot on those?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, that's an absolute cert, we can take that with certainty, right?
Um, yes, well, I I. That, that's a tough. That's a tough yes, cuz. They, these, these catch bases were installed years ago, but yeah, but I I believe that the ones on the riverway and and through the Emerald Lexus are four feet. Not all of our catch bases are four feet, Mr. Sullivan, but I believe these are.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, if that three footer would work too. I mean, but anything less than a three footer is no good, just.
Right, right.
They don't work right.
I don't believe that, I don't believe these are definitely, with certainty, I can say they're not less than three feet.
Yeah, and and I thought, I heard you say that the disturbance of the earth would be six foot. Uh, wide, is, you're gonna be running backhoes and dump trucks around here.
And I. Are you talking about the trench? The trench is not.
No, I, I heard the disturbance would be no more than six feet. In the first part of the presentation.
I buy. You know, when I was talking about it, I said it's, it's, I said, we're not going to have a six foot wide hole. Because we're only installing a twelve inch pipe.
Right, right. Oh, no, I, I realized that, but when you take backhoes and dump trucks and you play on front lawns. Um, you usually disturb quite a bit of. Earth, et cetera. So all that will be restored, but it'll also be protected. Cuz you know, you got a backhoe, he's turning the thing around and his. His whole radius is gonna be a good fifteen feet of running over dirt, et cetera. I don't know when you're doing this and how muddy it's gonna be. But the erosion controls are gonna have to be more than just something at the face there. You gotta worry about the runoff, overland runoff. During a rainstorm before you get chances to reseed it all. So.
You're absolutely correct. We're, we won't have a backhoe either. It'll be just one. Piece of, well, two pieces of equipment will be down there, one mini excavator and a dump truck. And the dump truck will be limited to the um, to the bike path. Only. I, I don't know if you got, had a chance to actually go to the site, but uh, most of these are right on the bike path. So, so, so the dump truck will be, you know, kinda. Stationary to the bike path and the mini excavator will be doing the digging just off the bike path.
So you wouldn't mind having an order of condition saying you'll only have a mini excavator? And uh, dump trucks stick on the bike path? But.
That way we would be. I mean, I don't think that's necessary, but if if that's what the commission feels.
Well, I just, I know contractors, I know everybody goes in with good intent. To make everything beautiful. And then we let loose contractors. And, you know. We've experienced it with D C I before, Tom, that's all.
I'm sure your experience with me has been all good though, John, right? I've, I've never.
Oh, yeah.
Did you wrong, correct, right?
Well, no, I, we experienced it ourselves, as much as we tell people what to do. Every now and then, it just goes awry, and I, you know, I'm concerned with. After all the work we did on the muddy river, after all the planning we did, and the neighbors and everyone else love it now. In comes D C R. Good intentions to make good outfalls for the future. And it's all muddy and dug up, and you don't get to it right away, and the timing is wrong. And then we all have a black eye. We get a black eye for not forcing you to make sure it's done right. You know.
I can assure you, the biggest black eye would be on D C I, we wouldn't want that, but um, if the commission feels that you wanna put, put something like that in in the conditions, so.
I'm, I'm just bringing it up for the staff to consider stuff, that's all. Um, that's all I'm doing. So, so we have good catch basins, we have that, we'll be reducing T S S. The final thing that I didn't understand, cuz D C I has got the same problem that Boston has. Is reducing the amount of phosphorus from roadways. And I'm surprised you're not taking advantage of this. To find a way to infiltrate stormwater for the small storms. And reduce the amount of phosphorus you have, that's.
The, the major reason why we are, and it's a great question, um, is because the property isn't owned by DC. We have no, nowhere to do it. If, if the park was owned by D C I, then we would certainly be addressing that situation, but. Um, we can't put a B N P, uh, Boston Parks wouldn't allow us to put any type of B N P or any type of uh, infiltration. Uh, structures within their property, it's not on our property. It would take an act of uh, of um, legislation.
Yeah, chapter ninety-seven, but you could have. You could, Tom, you can always cut it there. That's, that's how it works. Anyway.
We tried.
So that, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, on the um, the mini excavator and the dump truck um, parking on the bike way. Um, I think that's, that's a great idea, Commissioner Sullivan. Tom, just for your. Just for your knowledge, we've been um, and through no fault of D C R, we've been burnt on that before. Um, thinking of Christian Herter Park. Is the, probably the biggest example during my tenure. Um, you know, work was supposed to be conducted on the um. Landward side of the pedestrian path, bike path. Uh, but your contractor ran amok. And uh, it, someone called in, or maybe, actually, I saw it one day while I was jogging. Uh, contractor went right up to the river, uh, right up to the Charles River. Um, huge um, tire tracks, you know, just ripped everything apart over there. Uh, it wa- it, it didn't look good either for D C R or for us. Um, it was, it was quite a mess, so um. To the extent that your contractor is gonna look at the order conditions, they're gonna pay attention to it. Um, uh, a- as well as what you can do in your instructions, the contractor, it would be good if that, that could be emphasized.
I, I have no problem with that, uh, Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman is willing to address a comment by Commissioner Sullivan as well. Um, on sheet six through nine of the plan set, you could see where the limits of work have been established. Around each um. Pipeline, that's a, the PVC line that's supposed to be put in. So the work activities will be occurring within that. The entire excavation area is going to be. Enclosed with erosion controls. Um, not just a set of erosion controls at the down gradient end of it all. So if in fact it does get a little torn up at times. Um. That area will be enclosed in erosion control, and we will have the opportunity to uh, restore it. Um, you know, before a problem actually occurs.
Okay, um, Commissioner Long, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you, Chair Parker. Hey, Tom and Thomas. Um, so I'm here with the Parks Department. Um, the ex officio seat on the commission. And um, yeah, I appreciate you guys working with Tom on this. I didn't know anything about it. Until reviewing. The project, um, but I understand. D C R owns the pipes um, in the outfalls and everything, so. I guess I'm. I'm wondering the, who's responsible for monitoring these outfalls? There are other periodically D C R staff who might go out and inspect these sorts of things?
A- absolutely, Commissioner Long, um. Per our MS four discharge permit, we have a really robust owner and plan that um, we inspect and clean all of our infrastructure yearly. So the, the, these outfalls, these outfalls, especially in and around, you know, you know, the Charles River watershed. Are uh, probably inspected more than once per year.
So it's kind of, kind of like what you were talking to Commissioner Sullivan about, about, you know, knowing this was an issue a while ago, but not. You know, not being able to fit it in to um, the phase two muddy river work or um, anything like that.
Correct, we've uh, I've been working with um. The muddy river group for about two years. And, and uh, A E COM, we, we, we brought A E COM in to do it, to do the N O I. It's probably taken about a year or fourteen months to put this together. To, to now present it to you guys tonight. So it's, it's been a work in progress. I've been working with Tom and, and that whole uh. You know, the book, um. Tom Brady from the Brookline Group and um, and Patrice Kish from, from D C R, the three collaborators with, within the phase two uh, muddy river group. To, to get this job done.
Got it. Um. And since this will be, you know, decreasing the water velocity. Do you anticipate, you know, eventually having to do a routine repair or maintenance project, kind of like this one, you know, far into the future? Or does this feel like something that's like a, more of like a permanent improvement?
Within the Boston Parks prop- property permanent improvement.
Yeah. Um. I had a question too about the um. The restoration of the banks. Um, I know on page thirty-one. You were saying although work isn't gonna occur within the bank. It will be. It will be limited to the area directly surrounding the existing outfall, and the grades will be restored to pre-existing conditions. So does that mean? It'll, the bank will look like it does now, or will it look like it did before all of this erosion?
Sorry, it's um. You know, right now, we just, we have some scour, some cut banks devoid of vegetation. So we're gonna be coming in and just stabilizing um, those areas. Um, to hopefully have it look more like it did prior to the problems occur.
Okay, got it. That makes sense. Is um, just from the picture, a outfall one, four, two, zero, eight. Is that in one of the restoration areas or the planting areas from previous projects or?
None of these outfalls are, are gonna be going through any of the restoration planting areas from Muddy River. That's why some of them were really altered. Um, in it, the angles were changed. It wasn't just. Mr. Keo mentioned before, we moved some of the angles of the out, existing outfalls to avoid trees. It was to do that, but to also avoid plantings in restoration areas that the Muddy River had done um. Unbeknownst to them, that was right over an existing outfall that we needed to replace. So we're, we're avoiding that too.
Yeah, I was asking cuz that, in one of the photos, it looks like there was like, you know, temporary fencing around that area, but it looks like Frank Mities or something. Um, so hear you on that. Um, I think that's mostly it for my questions. Um, the, the only other thing. I was wondering about is um, you know, maybe. You know, post-construction. Would it be possible to get a plan showing the seeded areas? Kind of like an as-built for the seeded areas?
We will be doing an as-built of this area. I, I, I don't think it's a, a big issue to send the uh, send any as-bills to you guys afterwards.
That'd be great, just so staffer commissioners can see um. You know, the success of those seeding areas and, you know, kinda put. Real life to what's on paper or what's before us right now. Um, but yeah, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, Commissioner Long, question for you regarding the as-bills, and Commissioner Herbst, if you have any thoughts on this, please chime in. Um, is that different than what we would receive from the um, proponent? Uh, when they submit for the certificate of um, completion?
You know, I, it may not be. I, I only asked because of um. Something that was up for discussion in the order of conditions for a landscaping plan pre-construction. But Commissioner Herbst.
I mean, we'll definitely be do a, a, you know, an as-built, but I think sometimes. It details on the, on the vegetation might be lacking, so helpful to point that out.
Yeah, we, so, so let the commissioners know. Um, we usually have a photo log that accompanies our as-built plan as well. With our request for certificate of compliance. Um, that way it just saves everybody a trip out there to see if the seed germinated or uh. You know, if the asphalt patching on the bike path or anything like that held. So it, that would be included with our COC request along with the as-built.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Fantastic, good. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Long. Um, Commissioner Richmond?
Hold on. Yeah, I don't have any questions. I'm having some technical difficulty. With my uh, machine, which seems to wanna not charge, so um, I may have to move over to a different machine, but. I appreciate this conversation and I don't have any other questions.
Great, thank you. Good luck with your issues there. Um, Commissioner Herbst, do you have anything?
Yeah, one question, could, could you just confirm the, the riprap? Where is that in relation? I- is it all landward of the bank and the land underwater, or is it on the bank or?
Um, a lot of it will be below the bank and just at land underwater. Or I'm sorry, to above the land underwater. Um, so a lot of the banks here are cut banks, so you know, a bank thinking of it. In the regulatory sense is a linear feature, rather than an area feature, so it would be below top of bank. Um, in above land underwater.
I'm, I'm partly asking because of the, I'm trying to find it, maybe it's fifteen through eighteen. It looks like you've got these dips in them, not. That don't look like they would exactly sit on a bank, so. I was wondering if they were before the bank. Um. Do you know what I mean? Fifteen through eighteen, uh, I think.
Um, plan set page fifteen through eighteen?
Yeah, uh, sorry, so, oh, sheet seventeen is at least one of them, yeah. It's so fit, the sheets fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Yep, so the top of the bank would be landward of the uh. The pipe discharge. And the land underwater is. Um, looking at, looking at it to the right of the riprap. So as you can see, um, you see on.
But if, I, I guess I'm just. I mean, it would have been helpful for you to identify where the bank and where the water is on these, but I, it, I'm just not clear how that. So the, used to seeing riprap look.
Uh, so looking at, um, I'm looking at seventeen. Now, let me uh. And, so the top of bank. You'll see detailed number seven, concrete pipe flared end and an arrow pointing down. To the pipe, the top of the bank is to the left. Of that, and it's that first observable break in slope as it starts to. Um, when it first starts to dip off towards the pipe. So it is below the bank, but mean high water or ordinary high water. Mean high water doesn't begin until you get to the right of the riprap.
Okay. All right, it's just, it's a. Maybe riprap isn't, maybe I shouldn't be thinking of it as traditional riprap. Um.
Yeah, it's not armoring for the bank.
Yeah.
If that's what you're thinking.
Yeah.
It's going to be just at the discharge end of the flared end.
Okay. Uh, and then the other question I had was just, could you, I, you may have said it, you probably did, but. Could you say what the nature is of the temporary impacts in land underwater?
Um, that would be to, the temporary impacts of land underwater would be removing any structure that. Is in the way of installing the new pipe. So in most cases, there's buried infrastructure there that we might have to remove. Um, you know, a flared end that's buried or just a pipe that's buried. Um, in an order to install the new pipe in that same location, we would have to remove the old. That will not be occurring at every location, as some of these have been moved. Um, to avoid vegetation removal, but those would be the temporary impacts.
Um, I, I, I'm gonna jump in a bit, and I'm, there, there is no, um. Removal of anything underwater. All these locations, they're either on bank or uh, they're. I, I've looked at this really closely. There is no word within the water.
Okay, so there's no temporary impact to land underwater at all?
To my knowledge, that's what I believe, yes. Um, and Tom, I don't, I mean, if you wanna elaborate on what you're thinking and what you, what you might have seen that I didn't. There's, there's no uh, there was no removal of anything inward of water. I mean, we were putting a curtain in for protection of. Up, upland work, you know, but there was no inland water work at all.
Well, that's better. It's true.
Good answer.
Okay, um, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Dee Dee, are you still on?
Yep, I'm still on.
You are, cuz I see someone with a telephone number that wants to be admitted. Uh, I wanted to make sure that wasn't you. Um. I guess we should admit that telephone number. Since we got Zoom bombed, I'm afraid to hit that button.
It, it's probably our commissioner, Alice.
Maybe it's Alice, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, um. Dee Dee, uh, I don't even see any members of the public, um, but uh, has anybody raised their hand? I don't see anyone raising their hand to comment.
Nope, no raised hand.
Okay.
And nothing in the inbox.
Okay, thank you. So, Tom from DCR. Um, we talked about a couple of uh, special conditions that we'd like to add regarding the excavation methods and um. There's one other. Oh, the de-limming. Um, have you seen the order of conditions that Dee Dee uh, sent back to you? And if so, are they acceptable to you with the addition of these two uh, conditions? Because if so, we can um. I can call for a vote to issue uh, the order of conditions tonight and close the hearing, and you can be on your way, or. Um, do you need to bring the order of conditions back to DCR for further review?
So we did review, I'm trying to pull them up again. Give me one second, I apologize.
Sure.
You gotta look for them again here. I put them in my files. Right here, alright. Um, most of them. Uh, with Dee Dee had sent us, most of them, uh, that I commented on were removed. There were a couple, Tom, I'm gonna, I'm gonna um, kind of rely on you to jump in a little bit if, if possible on a few.
I don't know if it would be possible for Dee Dee to put the conditions on the screen and share that with us? Um, cuz there was a, a few conditions in there, Mister Chairman, that. Would really apply if DCR owned the property. Um. Rather than Boston Parks, you know, a lot of perpetual maintenance conditions and things like that, that DCR just cannot be responsible for. Um.
Okay.
Conditions in a DCR park, but not in, not for DCR to maintain in Boston Parks property.
Yeah, that's very helpful, because that's, that's what I didn't realize. That's why I asked a question about the ownership. Uh, and we have had that issue with DCR before, um, and um. And I, DP actually opined on it. So yeah, if you don't own the property, uh. It is difficult for us to place a perpetual maintenance condition uh, on DCR for property it doesn't own, so. Um, I would say we would um, be able to remove the um. The perpetual maintenance conditions that we have in here. And we probably. Have to take a look at it, but we probably wanna make sure that there are maintenance conditions. Well, no, we do have maintenance. Conditions during the pendency of the work. As outlined in the um, NOI and the new conditions that we're gonna put in there. So I think if, if the only holdup, which it usually is, uh, when we are um, negotiating with DCR. Or the perpetual maintenance um. Conditions, um, I think we can remove them, and if Tom from DCR, if you're fine with the. Conditions that uh, were removed, that were not applicable to your project. And we add the two conditions we talked about tonight, uh, can we close this out and you can be on your way?
I, I believe so. I'm just skimming through really quick.
And things like for the catch basins, Tom.
Yeah.
Uh, if there are no catch basins, then no harm, no foul.
Right, and that, and that's, I think that's the ones, like, a couple like that where they may be in here, but they're not gonna be, um, you know. What's the word I'm looking for? They, they don't. Yeah, they just don't apply, exactly, thank you.
The, the reason we're sensitive about the catch basins is one is Commissioner Sullivan, um, will give me hell if we let go of them. Uh, for two, importantly, maybe you find one. We had a, a situation not that long ago. Um, where a applicant doing work found the catch basin, right? Um, that they didn't know was on the property. Um, and so just in case it's there, if you find one, it applies to you. Um, so.
Okay.
Okay, so it sounds like um, we might be able to uh, issue this order of conditions and close you out?
Sounds good.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue the order of conditions and close the hearing, the order of conditions. Um, we would add two, two additional conditions. Oh, boy. Okay, got my notes back. Two additional conditions, the first one being um. Uh, during work, uh, only a mini excavator will be used, and any dump trucks uh. At the site will be limited to the bike path. Um, if that changes, uh, you'll come back to the commission, um, or commission staff. Uh, to notify them, and also that um. As far as the work itself, the de-limming. Oh, oh, actually, in adding on to that, and all work will be done within the limits. Of the areas uh, within uh, the erosion control um, system. Um, and then also, uh, if anything beyond any clearing activities other than de-limming. Um, needs to occur that you will uh, notify commission staff as well.
Okay.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to um, add those two conditions to the order of conditions and close the hearing. Okay, that's a first and a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond? I know she's having difficulties. Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so that carries five, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there's also been a number of continuances, continued have been uh, our notices of intents for DP file numbers. Excuse me, zero, zero, six, one, seven, zero, four, and Boston file number twenty, twenty, dash, zero, zero, seven. Um, DP file number zero, zero, six, one, seven, seven, two, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-one, dash, zero, one, zero. DP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, six, one, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-three, dash, zero, five, one. DP file number zero, zero, six, one, nine, five, seven, and Boston file number twenty, twenty-three, dash, zero, four, seven. Commission will now begin its regular meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda are administrative updates. Uh, we already had one. Um, uh, Dee Dee has been appointed the interim agent for the commission while uh, Elena is out. Um, Dee Dee, did you have anything else?
Yes. Um, so, uh, first administrative update are that the Mata Hunt parcel transfers have been approved. Um, so there are six parcels that were officially transferred from the care, custody, management, and control of the mayor's office of housing. To the care, custody, management, and control of the Boston Conservation Committee. And this occurred on November fifteenth, uh, twenty, twenty-three. And the six parcels are located along Alabama Street and Colorado Street. Yeah, and I don't know if there's any questions from the commission about the uh, Mata Hunt parcel transfers.
No, just fantastic.
Okay, perfect.
Else?
And the second administrative update, um, is that the twenty, twenty-four filing, hearing, and site visit dates. Uh, were posted online, and I provided a link in the document. Uh, called administrative updates in the project folder. In the hearing folder, my bad. Yeah, and those were the only two administrative updates for tonight's hearing.
Great.
I had a question on administrative updates. How many times do we continue a project? How long can a project be continued? Um, you know, in NOI, and we can, cuz some of these things, I'm getting older, but some of these were when I was a young guy. That's still on.
Yeah, it's a really good question. We have eliminated some, um, the, um, I talked to, um. I think it was Allison about this. Anything more than a year, we were letting go. Um, and, or dropping off. Um, and what has happened is a couple of these. Um, were out for a year, we took them off, and then they got back on because they requested. Uh, another hearing, but I'm noticing Commercial Wharf East condominium does not fall into that category, so. Um, I think we need to abandon that one. So it's a good point, but um, yeah, we had some on there for, like you said, well over a year for a while. Um, and it gives me a horse voice trying to um, uh, call them all out every meeting, so.
I mean, I don't know how you, if you mean literally just dropped them, but. I, I would just tell them, you know, you better come in and get ready to go or, or we're, we're going to assume you're, you're, you're letting it go.
Yep, you're right. That's what we did with the coolest, the Allendale project. Actually, we made them refile, I believe.
Yeah, in their case.
Yeah, because they were out for a while. It's like, you, you have to update this. We're not going to take a N O Y from twenty twenty, or whenever it was, twenty twenty-one. So, so that's the end.
Yeah. I think the commercial one may be a different status, like we're, we're expecting them to do something rather than them wanting something from us.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they probably abandoned this project. My recollection now is that they got hung up in litigation with the Marina. So if they're in litigation, we may never see them again. Okay. Okay. With that, I think all we have left is the acceptance of the meeting minutes from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. I looked through them. I corrected a few typos. I tried to make us all look a little bit more literate. So with that, if there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved, but just wondering if that was a big project. Making us look more literate.
That's only for me, for the rest of superstars. Revisionist history was very convenient. So we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond, she's back? So, Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye, that carries five, nothing. Okay, with that, this truly was a short one. Motion to adjourn by acclamation?
Aye, aye, aye.
And I.
Dee Dee, thank you very much. You did a wonderful job and so enjoy the break.
Take care.
Thanks, Joe.